Thank you. Good morning, Council President Wesson, colleagues. I would like to ask to join me at the podium at this time Congresswoman Lucille Royball-Ollard, Congressman Javier Becerra.
I didn't see you come in Congressman, welcome.
U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Colonel Kim Colleton. Now, our distinguished colleagues Ms. Lucille Royball-Ollard and Javier Becerra may not be able to stay through the whole presentation, so we're going to bring them up and have them say a few words early on. But I just want to say that this is the first inaugural River Day event at City Hall, and we're all thrilled to be here. What a few weeks it has been.
Applause if we're that thrilled. Yeah, I'm thrilled.
We just opened two recreation zones. We held the first L.A. River Campout, and last but not least, with the cooperation of the local U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and our amazing partners in federal government, two of whom are standing with us today, and the determination of Mayor Eric Garcetti, we were awarded Alternative 20 for the Los Angeles River. We're going to honor someone very special in all of our hearts in just a short while. But first, I would like to have our river heroine, Congresswoman Lucille Royball-Ollard, to say a few words.
Thank you so much. This truly is a wonderful day for the city of Los Angeles, and I really want to begin by first commending Ed Reyes, who came to my office in Washington, D.C. around the early 2000s to say that he had this vision and this idea for the L.A. River, and he wanted help to make it a reality. And since that time, we have seen how the city of Los Angeles, friends of the river, our city council, everybody has come together, and today we are celebrating the first step in the realization of that vision. And I want to really extend some sincere thanks to Colonel Colleton for the Corps of Engineers for listening to our community, for trusting us, and for willing to choose or recommend Alternative 20. A lot of, you know, it took a lot of courage, believe me, the way Washington works, it took a lot of courage for her to do that. So let's give her a round of applause as well. And just like in Los Angeles, it's taken a team effort, I also want to thank my colleague Javier Becerra and the other members of Congress from the L.A. region, because again, it was a team effort in Washington, D.C. that also made this possible. But the person that really put us over that winning line was our mayor, Eric Garcetti, who went to Washington to get that Alternative 20. So with that, again, a thank you all. We still have a lot of work ahead of us, and I look forward to working with all of you, so that one day we will be doing, I don't know whether it could be a ribbon cutting or whatever it is, but maybe we'll just be picnicking along the L.A. River. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Congresswoman Lucille Royball-Ollard. I know this much, someday the history books about the Los Angeles River will have you featured prominently in them for your contributions to make this happen. Thank you. She deserves a big round of applause. And next, a man who needs no introduction, but I'll give him a brief one anyway, and that is Congressman Javier Becerra, who's been in the House of Representatives now for over 20 years, a real mentor to myself, to many, many others, and a leader at Capitol Hill for our benefit, Congressman Javier Becerra.
Councilman O'Farrell, we say thank you so much, Mr. President, and to all the members of the city council. Thank you, because you had the foresight to push for Alternative 20, you had the foresight to lead the city forward, so we would have an opportunity at the federal level to try to secure the funding that it will take to convert the river into what we consider a place to go, a destination point. And we have to say thank you to Mayor Garcetti for the effort he put into this, the investment of time and networking to make it happen. But I must say, I concur with everything my colleague Lucille Royball-Ollard said. Many people were involved. Louis McAdams and I were just talking a second ago about how if anyone thinks this was a momentary victory, they forget the decades it took to get to this point. And this year, we hit that fork in the road, and as Yogi Berra says, we took it. And fortunately, we took the right fork in that road. And so I just want to say to each and every one of you who played a role in investing over the decades to make it possible for us to say that L.A. will revitalize one of its great arteries and make it a riverway we're proud of, thank you so much for understanding that we do this for the people of Los Angeles. Thank you very much for recognizing that L.A. is a place to be, because our best days are yet ahead of us. To Mitch O'Farrell, to all the city council members, thank you very much.
Thank you Congressman, thank you.
Thank you Congressman Javier Becerra. And now to say a quick few words is Colonel Kim Colleton.
Thank you, sir. I guess I'll be very brief and just restate my commitment to where we go from here and how we go forward. And so a quote yesterday that I picked up was, you know, "One person can run fast, but together with many, you can go far." And really, the collaboration that's happened up until this time has been from, you know, those distinguished members that just spoke before me and everybody out here. But we have more to do, and I just want to say that I am committed, my agency is committed to continue to develop the studies so we can bring it back to D.C. to get authorization and appropriation, so we can see the change happen that the city of Los Angeles has asked for. So thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you Colonel. And now I would like all three of you to join me in presenting a certificate to the city of Los Angeles on this inaugural River Day. Thank you so much. What an incredible day. And now, I'd like to introduce someone who was just mentioned a moment ago, our friend, our local poet laureate and a scholar, the original friend and founder of Friends of the Los Angeles River, Mr. Louis McAdams, to lead us off with a poem about the L.A.
It's a very weird feeling to be reading a poem to the city council while all the people that I'm reading it to are behind me. But I thought about Miles Davis, and he always played in his later years facing away from the audience, maybe because he was researching the next phase of his career. And I'd like to think maybe that's possible for me, too. I feel like I've been drowning in the L.A. River for 27 years, and I haven't hit the bottom yet. That sounds strange, doesn't it? Anyway, this is a poem called "The Voice of the River." I'd also like, speaking of voices of the river, to remind you that the L.A. River River Rover, our 38-foot recreational vehicle, which is an L.A. River Mobile Classroom, is outside the city hall today. Today is its debut, and everybody's welcome to come take a look at what we've done, what we've done with the help of Miss Me and Lilly Kim and Eric Choi. The voice of the river is a red-winged blackbird twittering in the trash bags festooned across the branches of a cottonwood tree like prayer flags. The freeways are louder than the river, the I-5, the 110, the LB overwhelm the river and its tributaries with their roar. But when the tributaries bring their gifts of rainwater to the main stem, the river can be louder than the thunder rolling out of the San Gabriel's. The voice of the river is the golf balls clanking in the power towers, and the kids on their bicycles laughing when they spot the mud people moving along the sandbars in silent meditation. I hear the river singing through the passing railroad cars, the screeching metal as a MetroLink commuter train tears apart, news choppers circle overhead, the howling ambulance sirens followed by the coyote pack's howl, the high-pitched "Chee!" and the endless meetings, the BMPs, always one or two more, the laptops clicking, the TMDLs, the BMPs, the RFPs, the SSOs, and the UAAAs, the murmuring bureaucrats, the sharp whack of gavels, the deep voice of command, the swooping bats and the swallows and swifts. I listen for them to make my own hearing more acute. The scream of a fish hawk, the flashing of a hundred pigeons, and the rock doves, too, scatter in fear, a great blue hair and sorrowful "Honk!", the triple trill and ripple of water moving across rocks. At the center of itself, the river is silence, and that's where I come in, with the sounds in my head and the words in my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you Louis, that was amazing, thank you so much. Along with friends like Louis McAdams, we have so many others, and we honored them earlier in the rotunda. And at this time, I would like all of the honorees to stand with me at the podium, so you could be recognized as I read your names.
Mr. O'Farrell, Lilly, stand over there. Good job, right in the middle.
If you have a certificate, please join me. This day is for you. And colleagues, if you haven't had a chance to say something, you'll get a moment to do so. From Council District 1, we have Lauren Bond. She was given a great honor and beautiful words by our colleague Gil Sadio earlier in the rotunda, and thank you, Mr. Sadio, for your kind words about this hero. From Council District 2, we have Rick Ravens of the Village Gardeners, representing Paul From Council District 3, representing Bob Blumenthal's office, we have Canoga Park High School's Future Farmers of America. And on behalf of Tom Labange, Council District 4, we have Eric Choi and Lilly Kim, the president and legal counsel to the garment companies Miss Me and the funder of the River And from Council District 5, Mr. Paul Corretts, we have the Sepulveda Basin Wildlife Preserve, Reserve, sorry. And from Council District 6 and 7, representing Nuri Martinez and Felipe Fuentes, we have And not able to attend today, but on behalf of Bernard Parks, is Alice Tolar, who wasn't able to be here. Alice? And from, yes. We have a very special guest today, and that is Executive Director of L.A. Conservation Corps, Mr. Bruce Saito, on behalf of Council President Herb Wesson.
Go Bruce, go Bruce.
And on behalf of Mike Bond in Council District 11, we have Hamid Tadoyan, Mr. And on behalf of the other Mitch, Council District 12, Mitch Englander, we have the North Valley YMCA. And from Council District 14, we have Yuval Bar Zemer, board member of Friends of the Los Angeles River, on behalf of Jose Wezar. And lastly, not lastly actually, from Council District 15, Joe Buscano's office, we have the Council for Watershed Health. And we gave a special recognition to Mr. Mort LaCretz, who is funding a bridge across the river in Griffith Park. Thank you honorees, and after this presentation, we will take pictures on the Spring Street steps.
Give them all a round of applause. Okay, now, I guess that's, Mitchell, if you could wait a moment. Mr. Labange.
...asked, because this city was founded on the Los Angeles River 223 years ago, and I wanted to thank all those very special honorees who were here today before they departed for the rest. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'll be brief.
No, go.
I'm fine. I just wanted to rise, because we all know, all the river advocates here know, that the Los Angeles River starts in the San Fernando Valley. The vast majority of the L.A. River that is within the city of Los Angeles is within the San Fernando Valley, and so I just wanted to take a moment to highlight the work of Rick Ravens and Village Gardeners, who of their own volition, from a grassroots effort, stood up and began beautifying that part of the river in Sherman Oaks and Studio City. And I just wanted to say thank you, Rick, on behalf of all the people of the southeast valley for all the work that you're doing there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Labange. At this time, I will turn the program back over to Mr. O'Farrell.
And at this time, Mr. President and colleagues, I would like to invite our very special guest today, Mr. Ed P. Reyes, to join me at the podium. Mr. President, colleagues, all gathered here this morning, welcome again to Los Angeles River Day. You already heard from some of our exceptional guests earlier, Congressman Javier Becerra and Congresswoman Lucille Royball-Ollard. We stand here today, all of us together, to honor a man that served on this body for 12 years and chaired the ad hoc committee on the Los Angeles River for 11 of those years, Councilman Ed P. Reyes. Ed, you are admired throughout City Hall, in our community, and universally by river advocates everywhere for your work in this area. I must also again thank our mayor for giving me the opportunity back in 2002 while he was councilmember, and whom I staffed while he sat on your L.A. River Committee as its vice chair. Working with your exceptional staff, including Jill Soriel and Lupe Vela. Over a 10-year period, I witnessed your leadership firsthand. You may not have realized it, I certainly didn't at the time, but you schooled me on all aspects of river advocacy. When I was elected last year and President Wesson appointed me as chair of the Arts, Parks, and L.A. River Committee, I felt prepared and ready to carry on your legacy with my current council colleagues. I also want to recognize and thank Mr. Mayor Garcetti, who worked tirelessly with our federal partners, including the EPA and the Obama Administration, from whom we received the amazing announcement last week. Thank you, Mayor Garcetti. But we have to acknowledge that, Ed, it's because of the groundwork you laid and your steady leadership since 2002 that we were able to go to Washington, D.C. last fall to make our case for Alternative 20, which will bring $1 billion to Los Angeles to revitalize our river. The federal funding will have a ripple effect, pun intended, improving our neighborhoods along the river, and will also positively impact our local economy, bringing with it jobs, tourism, and a healthier environment for everyone. We stand here today to congratulate you for putting the river on an irreversible course for success. After swimming upstream all these years, the river is beginning to carry us with it into the future. This billion-dollar plan, known as Alternative 20, has been adopted by the Army Corps of Engineers, supported by our mayor, our Southern California Congressional delegation, both U.S. senators, and the President of the United States. It will provide habitat restoration and connectivity along the river for an 11-mile stretch in the heart of the city. Our river will become beautiful, natural wetlands, attracting birds and wildlife to give the children of Los Angeles a much-needed opportunity to connect with nature. Who knows? We may even witness the return of the stillhead trout. Ed, it is you who set in motion the events that led to this day. There is no way to cover 11 years in a five-minute presentation, so we'll highlight just a few of your accomplishments. That include putting the River Revitalization Master Plan in place and seeing it adopted in 2007. Although no master plan is ever perfect, I have to say, this one is a work of art. It is a great plan because of the incredible participation from communities all along the river and the expert consultants who articulated our collective vision. Ed, it happened this way because of your leadership. Helping to create in 2008 with the leadership and vision of Congresswoman Lucille Royball-Ollard, River Day on Capitol Hill was created, setting the stage for broadening the awareness in our nation's capital, therefore and thereby building federal support for the river. Making the case successfully for the EPA to designate the L.A. River as a traditionally navigable waterway in 2010 was also a step that helped this happen. Putting in motion the ARBER study in the first place back in 2006 by working with all of our partners also helped deliver this victory. ARBER stands for Area With Restoration Benefits and Opportunities for Revitalization, and I will never, ever memorize that. You also put the River Improvement Overlay Zone in motion so that traditionally neglected communities along the river, those that have suffered from some of the most egregious planning and development injustices, could finally have standards improving the built environment that are deserving of the people who live and work along the river. You partnered with the MRCA, the Army Corps, and the L.A. Conservation Corps to create recreation zones along the river, legalizing kayaking and canoeing for the first time. You helped preserve Taylor Yard, which is next to the river in Council District 1, for open space by partnering with the community and the state to build a massive new park, Rio State Park, instead of building 100 acres of industrial warehouses. Ed grew up along the river in a community that had its struggles, and because of your personal history, you brought a certain righteous authenticity to your passion for improving the river's access, its habitat, and its prospects for the future. You knew that by revitalizing our river, we would revitalize our spirits, our neighborhoods, and our city. To many, Louis McAdams, who founded Friends of the Los Angeles River in the 1980s, is considered the father of the Los Angeles River, the man who brought to life our imaginations of what is possible there through his early advocacy and moving poetry. And Ed, if Louis is the father of the L.A. River, you are its son. The leader who synthesized the various efforts and ideas into one collaborative focus, setting in motion a clear process to make our dreams of a restored Los Angeles River into reality. And for that, Mr. Reyes, we are very, very grateful.
Thank you so much. I told myself I wouldn't get to this point, but thank you Mitch. My mom is here with me, my wife Martha, my brother Richard, my son Eddie, my daughter Natalie, Adam and Angel, they're at school, Abby, thank you for joining us. This is an emotional moment for me. It's emotional because, one, I'm very humbled that Mitch would create this space for me. It was not about me, it's about all the workers, all the staff that labored so intensely to get us to this point. The congressmembers that were here, I want to thank them, I know they have busy schedules. Congresswoman Royball-Ollard, when I first went to go see her in 2002, she mentioned this. I took her the set of plans of Taylor Yard, gave her perspective on how we rejuvenate the river, went through some technical stuff, and she had this really long look, she was sitting back in her chair and looking at me like, is this for real? And it took a while, but at the end, her sage advice was, Ed, what you need to do is create a stage big enough so that everyone has a spotlight. And that's what I started to do. Create that stage so that everyone had a spotlight in this process. But the biggest spotlight I wanted to put on was on the community, the people who were seeking relief from the pressures of poverty, the need for housing, recreation, and all of the issues that you talk about every day. Congressman Becerra took on the role after redistricting, but jointly between Congressman Becerra and Royball-Ollard, we had made a presence in D.C. I must have traveled two or three times in D.C., either National League of Cities or through just advocating for every state we took since 2002. But now we have great advocates, Congressman Janis Hahn, who's been a hero in dealing with our waterway issues, with Tony Gardner, who's also there advocating for us. So we have an amazing team in D.C. But it was the mayor who took it, I gotta say, we got close to the finish line, and he took the baton and carried it over. So thank you, Eric, thank you for making that happen. You had the option of saying, "It's not my project, it's not about me, it's not doing anything for me, it's not my deal." On the contrary, you said this was good for the region, it was good for the city, and it's necessary to take it to that point. So thank you, Eric, Mr. Mayor, for making that happen. Team Reyes, to me, and I see them here on the floor, played such a big role, Lupe Vela and Jill Soriel, they were the gladiators in the committee, but every staff person took a strong step in supporting these projects. At one point in our matrix, we had over 300 projects that we were moving. But the river itself was not about District 1, it wasn't about Ed Reyes, it was about the region, it was about drought, it was about kids who need recreation, but more important, it was about looking at ourselves the next 20, 30 years. How are we going to lower this heat footprint? How are we going to store our water? How we recycle our water? How can we capture that contamination, that plume that grows in our ocean and kills our ecosystems, our coral reefs? We have the ability to do that. We traveled around the world, we brought examples, we brought engineers to give us that knowledge, and now we're here. Gary Lee Moore, our city engineer, Deborah Weintraub, Dr. Carol Armstrong, all the interns, all the workers, let's give them a big round of applause, because they were the ones that pushed it through all those years. When I look at my colleagues that were on the committee, Tom Labange, who was one of the greatest cheerleaders, Eric Garcetti, Wendy Gruehl, Jose Wezar, John Perry, and tell me I didn't leave anybody out. Okay, he's not leaving anyone that's here, okay? But these were the folks that were there, and yes, sometimes they were boring, oh my God, another river committee meeting, why? But we had the river advocates there, and we made it happen, step by step, everything that was shared by Congressman O'Farrell. Mitch was there from day one, when we shut down Broadway, it's our very first committee, Mitch was there, and we talked about our guiding principles. But the first meeting we had over in City Hall East, we brought in all the department heads, we brought in CAO and the CLA, Jerry Miller. CAO and the CLA, Jerry Miller, but at that time it was Ron Deaton. And Ron stepped up and said, we'll go after the first $3 million to do the master plan. And we leveraged that $3 million to get to the $1 billion today. So that was a wise investment. But more importantly, we institutionalized what the river can be with a page in our budget. There's a page etiquette in our budget just to talk about all that we can generate and leverage with this great, great effort. So colleagues of the future, I actually contemplated this, writing a motion for each one of you, for each chair of each committee, just to give you a sense of where we could be. I don't want to think too much of myself, but being in that side of the horseshoe for 24 years, there's a certain perspective that you get to build about what's good for the whole city. But as soon as we learn how to improve our private-public partnerships, understanding the value of our assets along the river corridor, to know how to consolidate parking space so we can open up green spaces, so we can develop industries, sectors that deal with future employment while making space for affordable housing, that's what's going to make this city healthy. We are at a crisis point in affordable housing right now. We are at a crisis point. In the next two years that this drought continues, where will the water come from for this great metropolis? Where can we store that water? How can we recycle it? How can we bring it out of the river so that we can look at greenways? You've got great talent in your departments that have promoted green streets. We should listen to them. The report that came in from HUD, the NILA report, it was received and filed. We should have done actions. We should have done some directives. We should have looked at concluding statements that would have led us to more action. I have great faith in you, colleagues. I have great faith in the president of this council, of our mayor. But I tell you, I grew up near the river. All my family lives in the northeast area, and I'm not going away. I want to be part of this in one sector and one form or another because our children need it, our environment needs it, and it can't happen without you. So I thank you for all your hard work. I thank Mitch from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done. But more importantly, I thank all of the staff members who are out there at 9:00, 10:00 in the evening, working weekends, getting those reports done. Thank you all for everything you've done throughout these years. My heart is yours, and I receive this in your name. Thank you so much.
Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, Ed Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
And Ed, I'm going to present with a certificate, and I'd like your family to join us. Your family, please, to join us.
While you're taking the photo, let me share my thoughts, Mr. Reyes, with you as well. You know, having worked for an elected official now as a staffer and now as a council member, knowing how busy we are and our staffs are in our own districts and current legislative initiatives that we're working on, the tireless work that's done not only in this building and in committees, to take on something so significant and dedicate your life, your time to it, when it's an uphill battle, is rare amongst a lot of elected officials, and it's unique. I had the opportunity, in the shoes that I fill, to look back in Mr. Burnson and what he did, very similar to you, Mr. Reyes. He was known as Mr. Earthquake, and a lot of earthquake seismic safety issues and what he's done to make forever the city and the housing and buildings safer, bar none, than we'll ever have. What Greg did, and he was known as the Trash Man in Renew LA, in ending our dependency on landfills and reusing resources and making sure that trash is looked at from a different perspective, and dedicated his entire time to that as well, above and beyond everything else we're doing. Ed River Reyes, who has dedicated so much and so much effort and done such a terrific and amazing job, as I look around the horseshoe and I know that a lot of us are very young in our careers, if you will, and some of us have been around even that we can learn from and look to, such as you and others. And we look to carve out that same type of opportunity and where we can accomplish something for other people that will last lifetimes beyond us is an incredible accomplishment. And my hat's off to you. God bless you. Thank you so much. Mr. Labons.
Salute Ed Reyes and his mother and his wife and his brother and his family and his children. The great thing about being born in Los Angeles, you have opportunity to serve Los Angeles. And if you come from Oklahoma, you could serve too. So I don't want to offend anybody that way. But the beautiful thing is, is when you grow up here as a child, you see things in your eyes, and you see, why can't it be different? I lived upstream from you, Ed, and I saw the same holes, but you went to UCLA where they really taught you some great things, you know, and I saw the same water in the river as it ran down. And you put us together. All the city staff, please stand up, please. Just look at this. This is all the professional staff. Michelle, please, Maury, all the city staff, some got back to work. You put the professional teams together, and there were some boring meetings. There were some real boring meetings, but it got to a gold where we got to that we're really talking about it. And then you even go back further when you worked for Mike Hernandez. You go a little bit further in Mayor Bradley in 1988, the first meeting they had in his conference room, where I think Louis McAdams and I were the only ones at that era who were here. Louis was our first friend. All of it means that there's a baton to pass, and we see these young ladies here today. Today, you have a baton in your hand, and you get it from somebody else. Ed Reyes had a big baton, and it's 56 miles baton. And you really set it out for us all, and we continue to it. So I'm proud to stand to salute you for what you've done. A great fathom from Cathedral High School, right in the neighborhood, and all the you do. Ed Reyes.
Thank you.
All right.
In LA, where our rivers are paved and our streets aren't, yes.
But we're going to end on an up note.
Right.
I'm glad that, Mr. Reyes, you acknowledged our Congresswoman Janice Hahn. In representing her today, I'd like to acknowledge Annette McDonald also. She's very much in this room, our Congresswoman Janice Hahn. At this time, I, yes, I would like to invite my river sister up to the podium, Ms. Nuri Martinez, Councilwoman of the great 6th District. We met at the river last week, and there was a very lively competition that took place. So here to introduce that is Nuri Martinez.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Colleagues, I'm very proud to join my friend, Mitchell Farrell, in creating this video that we hope will help promote the LA River. The new zone, the new recreation zone opens this summer for families to enjoy and especially to help spread the word of the importance of the LA River. I know that in my district, in Council District 6 in the San Fernando Valley, open space is very precious, and it's just as important to residents, especially for those families who live in apartment buildings surrounded by cement. I am very thankful for the investment of my good friend, Ed Reyes, who created so much excitement over a decade ago around the LA River, and that's how I got involved. And as a former executive director of Bacoima Beautiful, we felt the need to actually do something about this and create and write grants to help promote the importance of the river and the Bacoima Wash, which is a tributary to the LA River. And I'm glad that Mr. Kokorian mentioned the river starts in the San Fernando Valley. It does very well, and we need to be connected. Ed Reyes was instrumental in making the river priority as part of his city work for over 12 years as he prioritized this project in his office. We would also would not be here, and we would not have a River Day had it not been for our good friend, Ed Reyes. So I'm very excited that in the Sepulveda Basin, we're going to kick off this new recreational zone. And I've challenged Mr. O'Farrell to a rematch, a kayak rematch, so we'll see how that turns out, and you'll check out the video. But thank you very much, colleagues, for indulging us this morning and not only supporting and promoting the river, but our really good friend and the son of the LA River, Mr. Ed Reyes.
Ladies and gentlemen, the LA River Follies.
It's another perfect day on the LA River, a perfect day for a kayak race. Our competitors are Mitch O'Farrell, Sultan of Silver Lake, Hercules of Hollywood, here on his home stretch of the river in the Elysium Valley of Council District 13, and Nuri Martinez, Queen of Council District 6, Princess of Panorama City, Victor of Van Nuys. She's been training on her home stretch of the river in the Sepulveda Basin. The competitors are vying for the elusive Golden Paddle entrusted to Omar Brownson, Executive Director of the LA River Revitalization Corps. So tell me, Omar, are we going to change the course of the LA River today?
Indeed, JB.
There you have it. Let's get to the race. And they're off, jockeying for position. And, and O'Farrell pulls out to an early lead. They're approaching the most dangerous part of the course, a series of rapids, boulders that can split a kayak in two. Ah, Nuri's jostling him. She's trying to find a line, but O'Farrell backs her off. Mitch is approaching the big drop. He's pulling for dear life. Is he going to make it? Phew, he made it. Mitch O'Farrell has a sizable lead, and it looks like Nuri's in the weeds. Nuri's out of the weeds, and merrily, 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 life is but a dream on the LA River today. O'Farrell has gotten his groceries delivered by Good Eggs. For all local grocery delivery in Los Angeles, it's always Good Eggs. Wait, he's gotten out of his kayak, he's running up the river. What's he doing? Oh, 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 O'Farrell, scoping out some mid-century modern furniture at Modernica Prop House? Modernica, for all your mid-century modern needs. Martinez is really making up for lost time. O'Farrell's going to have to hustle if he wants to stay in this. And he's back, and the race is on. And Martinez has gotten the lead again. Oh, O'Farrell has taken it back. And it's Martinez, Martinez has gotten. Now it's O'Farrell. Martinez, O'Farrell, Martinez, O'Farrell, Martinez, O'Farrell. Who is the masked man in the Go Fast boat, and how did he get that boat on the river? Oh, it's Herb Wesson. Council President Wesson wins the Golden Paddle.
And now to receive his award, the Golden Paddle, Council President Herb Wesson, on behalf of Omar Brownson. Thank you.